I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the March 5th, 2020 board meeting and get started with the, again, a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from February 20th, 2020. Look at that, 2020, 20. Moved.
Second.
Any changes, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizens' comments. I understand the Rotary Club is here, right, Scott?
Yes, my name is Scott Northrup. I represent the Baldwinsville Rotary. I'm here in lieu of Ken Schmidt. Thank you for listening to me tonight, to your honor, trustees, ladies and gentlemen. You folks have supported our Seneca River Days event in the past, and we have some applications before you currently, I believe. We are asking for a waiver of the rental fee for both Mercer Park and Paper Mill Island, June 12th and 13th, for a similar event for which we ran last year. We raised around $20,000 to go back into charities for the community. We had five, six thousand people in attendance for the two days. Again, I'd like to thank you guys for your support in the past. I've been a part of the, part of the event for the last two years, so this is my third year helping out. We have spoken with Chuck Chow in regard to the Friday night event on Paper Mill Island, partnering with him again as far as the alcohol goes. Fireworks again. So Rotary would supply a certificate of insurance in regard to that, and I believe Ken mentioned that we, the village, may have had to get a rider, which we paid for as well. I'm not entirely sure.
Fireworks, yeah.
For the fireworks?
Yeah.
And we, and we paid for that?
Yeah, we reimbursed.
We reimbursed the village? Okay.
You reimbursed.
We reimbursed the village. You as well.
I write the check.
Right.
Mo left me a note reminding me that, that we typically waive the rental fee for both Paper Mill Island and Mercer Park. We still have the $1,500 security fee, which is refundable.
Yes, sir.
The $85 trash fee, which is non-refundable, and a refundable $50 security fee at Mercer Park. You'll get that back, too.
Yes, sir. Yep, we agree with that.
Okay. And she says the insurance has been submitted?
I believe that what Ken sent was a copy of last year, so we would need a new certificate of insurance.
As long as Mo's comfortable, I am.
Okay.
Then you'll just need to submit the fireworks application to the clerk's office for my review.
Yes, sir. Does anyone have any, any questions? It's my first time up here, so this is my first go-around.
Well, you've done well.
Tough crowd.
What, what is the date, June 12th?
12th and 13th. It'd be Friday night, the 12th, and Saturday, the 13th.
It's always a great event. It's a great way to kind of start the summer, and people love their fireworks. I know last year, the music was great on Friday night.
So we'll have Todd Holman again, the Baldwinsville Pep Band, and we don't, we don't have the, the third band yet, but we will.
Good. Anybody have any other questions, Scott? We don't, at this point, need to do anything. I think we're...
He's asking us to waive the fees.
I guess we need a motion to waive the, the...
The fees for the...
The two fees for the two parks.
So do you want to put that as an agenda item, or do you want a motion at this point?
Do that now, right.
And the application has been submitted, and we have that in. So I'll make the motion to waive the fees for the Seneca River Days in support of the Rotary Club on June 12th and June 13th, 2020.
Move. Second. Yeah.
Hang in there, Meg.
I agree.
Any, any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. They're gonna have to send you...
I'm the Rotarian, I'm gonna recuse myself from that.
They'll probably send you every time now, if one still swell.
I suspect they're gonna send me back next year as well, so, so thank you, folks.
Good to see you, Scott. All right. Trustees' comments. Andy?
Agenda items only. Thanks.
Agenda's good with me.
Megan?
Just the agenda.
Bruce?
I'll stick to the agenda.
Ruth?
Agenda for me, too.
Mark?
Just, I had a question. I saw an email from, might have been from you forwarded from Maureen or from you about Anadaga County had passed along some links to regarding the coronavirus and some just common precautionary measures that people should take, and I thought it would be a good idea to try to put that, a link on our webs, on our website, just...
I shared that onto our Facebook site.
Okay, so whatever we can do to just, people have questions, kind of push them to a location that's more of a informed source, and most of it's pretty straightforward, but people have, it's, it's a topic of conversation, obviously, so...
A little bit, yeah.
So, just...
Jody, if you can say something to Mo tomorrow about getting that on the website? Anything else?
No, I think that's it. No executive sessions tonight.
Hey!
That's great.
How about that? Jody has a kind of a track record, but last meeting here was like the quickest of the year, you know? So she, on that note, I did take, there were some links at the bottom of that thing that came from the county executive's office, and one of them was for employers. So I made a copy and I sent it to Ruth and Steve and Mike and Mo. And again, it's, wash your hands, you know, as often as you can think about it. If you're sick, stay home type of stuff. Don't panic. I guess, you know, if you're sick, you know, you're tested or sick and you're home, all they're gonna do is tell you to stay home for 14 days. I mean, there's, there's really no treatment other than cold medicine, as far as I can tell.
You might want to ask the folks that take care of cleaning the village hall and stuff, public areas, to make sure they get doorknobs.
I mentioned that to Mo today. She said they have been doing that with the counter and stuff, but, yeah, the handles and stuff to the bathrooms and so on.
And to the outside door.
And that would, I mean, that applies to all the businesses in the village. I figured the county kind of takes care of all that, that I didn't need to set up a separate policy for the village, because the county policies are very adequate. I was very pleased with how they responded and had something public fairly quickly. And the county was, by the way, for those who didn't see it, was here last week to announce that we had been awarded a $300,000 Main Street grant. Ryan McMahon came in and made the announcement. We were the first village to get one of the five available $300,000 grants. The seven business owners were here. It was a very nice little session. I, I gave a hats off to, to Steve and Greg. They did most of the work. I mean, the proposal that Steve put together was that thick with maps and pictures and sketches and explanations of what this would do to help these businesses. And according to Ryan, when we were talking afterwards, he said it was by far the best proposal we got. And then the follow-up today, we met with the business owners to explain how the financing's gonna work, and Steve's proposal, the county has said they're going to give that to the other villages for the way for, they should handle the money. So we've really been the forerunner on how this thing works, because it was, it was a brand-new item, and they really were kind of scratching in the dark a little bit. And so hats off to Steve for, you know, getting out there and really taking care of stuff. Made us look very good. April 25th, some of you may have seen a story about this. Ron Gerard, who's been a barber in the village for 59 years, he's in that barber shop underneath the business on, it used to be a business on the corner of Canton and Downer Street. There's a barber shop down below.
Totten's, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be Totten's years ago, and he's finally hanging up the clippers. Arthritis is getting to him, and so if you've ever, if you used to go there and get a haircut and hadn't been there in a while, you might want to stop by and wish him luck on retirement. He's been a fixture in the village for a long time, and you don't see many people like that anymore that work 60 years at the same job. And then, don't forget, this weekend is daylight savings time. Don't get caught forgetting to set your clocks spring forward. Casino night for the Volunteer Center is the 14th, which is a week from Saturday, at the Red Mill Inn. I think there's still tickets available. You can get them at the Volunteer Center.
Limited tickets available.
They're probably, they're probably under, under 30 by now.
Yeah, there won't be, you can get them at the door if they have them, and chances are, the last few years, they haven't had them, so you might want to get them now. But it's a big fundraiser for the Volunteer Center. It does great things for our community, so... And I guess that's it. We'll move on to department heads. Attorney Bob?
I'll stick with the agenda.
Police Officer Greg?
Just one item to note. We had started the process to have a home demolished at the corner of Phillips and East Tennessee, and that home has been torn down. The property owner did take care of that, and they do plan to rebuild a home there. Probably won't happen this year, but for right now, the property's just gonna be grass, and they've already got a contractor that comes and mows it regularly, you know, from past couple of years that they've owned it. So hopefully, we'll have a, a new home there before too long.
Well, a lot of work on your part to get that taken care of. I appreciate it.
Also, thank you. Also, 62 East Anita was purchased, and, you know, we're hoping that that individual is going to...
That's one the fire department owns?
Yeah, the fire department's building on East Anita Street.
Right.
So he's looking to, he's trying to weigh his, weigh his options, whether he can repair that building, or whether he wants an income property there, or he wants to build a new single-family home. So we're looking at options.
Good.
Greg, are there any updates on the old barn dairy area? I know they've done a little work since that fire, but...
Basically, they're just, they were taking down some of the old dilapidated, well, the portion that burned, and some of the dilapidated, like, the garage structures. Beyond that, I don't have any other information on what they're gonna be doing moving forward.
Is that on our radar in terms of the, the Section 20, 28A, or...
Well, I mean, it is. And, you know, he's torn down part, you know, part of the buildings that we, you know, that we had, one of the buildings that we had listed has been torn down. One of the other buildings, he wasn't sure he wants to refurbish that or not, so...
Okay, well, if there's any way we could kind of get a, some feedback on what is, man, it's real eyesore coming in. I'm just, I drive to work that way now.
I'll, I'll get ahold of them and see what their next step is.
Twice a day I pass it, and I can imagine the people that are over there think it's quite an eyesore.
I, I know they want to rehabilitate the commercial buildings. Their thoughts have been some type of offices in those buildings, but they have not come back with a, you know, a concrete plan in a while.
Maybe a phone call is to find out what they're up to.
I will.
Is that it, Greg?
Yes.
Village Clerk Jody?
I'll stick to the agenda.
All right, down to Treasurer Anna.
Will also stick to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to the other side. Senior Senator Ruth?
Just to touch for a minute on the coronavirus that you mentioned earlier, I did post the information and guidelines that you forwarded from the county around the senior center in prominent locations, so that people have that information, and also the number if they have any questions, so, because we have a lot of folks there in the high-risk population, so the information is, is in the center. Also, the Beeville Express Coordinator asked me to let folks know that we could use some more drivers. We have several drivers who are in Florida at the moment, and the ride requests don't go down, but we, we're working with fewer drivers. So if you're in a position to help out with that, we'd love to hear from you. Just call the center and ask for Gina, and she'll talk with you about that. And then two things coming up. Baldwinsville Community Band will be at the Senior Center on March 11th. That's this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Everybody's welcome to come on in, and I think it's one of their first concerts of the season, so come and enjoy that. And then St. Patrick's Day is always a fun day at the Senior Center. Tuesday, March 17th, Rinconasonas School of Irish Dance will be in the Senior Center, and they put on a wonderful show, kids from like four to 18, and they dance and provide great entertainment, and our folks really enjoy it. So come on in and enjoy that as well on the 17th at 11:30. And that's it.
It is, it is interesting when you mention the coronavirus and the senior center, people being at risk. I mean, I'm in that senior category, and it's frustrating to listen to the experts say, "Look, this is not really bothering anybody except those that are 65-plus in that group." Other, there's no concern otherwise. It's like, "Otherwise? But what about for those of us that are 65 and older?" I mean, but it does sound like there were a lot of deaths out in Washington, and they were almost all in one senior nursing home.
Right.
So, it's kind of scary on that front. All right, we'll move on to public work. Steve?
The only thing I'd like to mention is that Chuck has asked me to make sure the board is aware. We're doing an awful lot of work, as we normally do in the winter, but this year more than others, on the rehabilitation of equipment. And I haven't mentioned it just because it's what we do, but Chuck's quite proud of the work that they're doing. To be honest, we are really extending the life of about four pieces of equipment up there. The guys are doing a terrific job. We do have, I think I'm carrying on a policy that goes all the way back to Claude. We buy equipment. We have an in-house mechanic, so we maintain it, we keep it for an extended period of time. Now, there's, there is a, a move afoot. Many municipalities are buying equipment and turning it over quite quickly, usually within three years. We haven't adopted that policy, particularly while we have an in-house mechanic. So what happens is a lot of this equipment just deteriorates. So the engines are running well, but doors start to not close properly, or even become to the point where they don't close at all, and the bed of trucks need to be rebuilt, and our guys have been doing some work on that. And I will say, it's, it's very good work. I think you'd be surprised if you saw it. Wouldn't even recognize that it was not either in factories, you know, shipped to us that way. So Chuck asked that I mention that to the board, and I do it with the caveat that we do have some pieces of equipment that are aging out, and we will probably see a couple high-end pieces of equipment in the budget in the next couple of years. We have a loader that's old. Right now, we're replacing both doors on it. They, they literally are rusting off, and our street sweeper is aging as well. We've done a lot of work to it, but you're probably gonna see those two pieces of equipment in our budget in the near future, maybe one next year and one the following year. But, but I will say that we are trying to extend the life of this equipment, and the guys are doing a pretty good job at it.
Good. That's great to hear.
And if we have the opportunity, we would gladly, we tried a couple weeks, a couple meetings ago, and we didn't have the opportunity, but I would be glad to have a Public Works Committee meeting at the Highway Garage and just as everyone walked through, and as they did, we could point out some of the stuff that we've been doing. And to be honest, you would need to have it pointed out, because when they do the work and then it gets painted, you, you wouldn't even notice that it's anything that we did. You would think that that's how it was delivered to us, you know, a number of years ago when the equipment was bought, so...
Well, I know you had Pac B up there when you, when the guys came up with that thing for taking the wings off. Maybe we could get him up and do another little session and show the public, you know, some of the, I mean, it's their tax money that's being saved.
If he had an interest, we could. But I think we would certainly like to show any interested board members, if someone would like to come up sometime. So we can try to arrange that, and if you think there's a need to get it out to the public, we could try to get Pac B to come up, and maybe on the day that we show you, we could have them just video that. That would be fine.
That's great. Well, kudos to your guys. All right, move on to police. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, if anyone noticed, either my LinkedIn page or the Baldwinsville Police Department's Facebook page, our officer Rosie turned four years old. She was inpatient on, on her birthday, so a number of us went to Galisono and took the party to her. That was a very nice experience for those of us that could, that could go. She was in, in high spirits, and she's got a lot of spunk, and she's, she's doing a great job there for us, and we're very proud of her, and we're very...
Crime rate is down.
Yes, yes. She's, she's keeping the crime rate down there, and the doctors and nurses seem to be doing exactly what they should be doing, so she's keeping them in line. But it really was, was a great experience for us to go up there, and I was very, very glad to, to be able to make that trip. And I know there's been some discussion recently in some, some places about a, a safe exchange zone for those of you that are buying and selling merchandise, either maybe through Facebook Marketplace, or Craigslist, or some other online market type. Our lobby of the police department is open from Monday through Friday, 8:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. We've got, it's staffed by a communications officer, as well as we have a camera in the lobby, so anyone in the public is, is able to tell people to, to meet and do the exchange at the Baldwinsville Police Department right in our lobby. We'll publicize that, and, and I would certainly hope that that might deter any potential scams or, or, you know, crimes from occurring during those, those exchanges, which for some people can be a little bit disconcerting and nerve-wracking, because you don't know exactly who you're meeting. But our lobby is, is a great place to do that. So we'll, we'll publicize that as well. And then, just piggybacking on the coronavirus a little bit, I'll be on a conference call tomorrow morning at 8:30 with the Department of Emergency Management and Department of Health, dealing with that from a law enforcement perspective. And also, for the public and the board's awareness, I did have a conversation with Mayor Clark earlier this week. Our policy in the police department on ambulance calls here in the village is our officers have traditionally responded to every single ambulance call in the village, certainly from my 32-and-a-half-year career. In light of this, but, but also as we think about our officers being exposed to the flu virus and other airborne viruses, we felt that it was probably time to modify that policy a little bit. So from now on, our officers will not be responding to what we refer to as general illness calls. We've met with Jim Hogan, the Director of the Ambulance Corps. We've talked this over. Certainly, if the ambulance requires our assistance, we would be responding. Any calls at Conifer or St. Mary's Apartments, we would automatically respond, even on a general illness, because we have master keys for both those locations. So we have to sometimes let them in. Obviously, if someone is, you know, having chest pains, or heart attack, or something that we, is our officers are CPR-trained and carry defibrillators in our cars, we're gonna respond to those calls as always. But just those general illness, someone's not feeling well type of call, we didn't feel the need for our officers to be exposed to individuals when really the ambulance can traditionally handle those types of things. And Director Hogan was gonna be advising his staff to, to let them know. So we have taken some, some modifications and some precautions there. Obviously, we're not a large police force, so if a quadrant of our officers were, were infected, that, that could potentially impact our ability to respond and certainly staff for a period of time. So we're just doing our best to mitigate as much as possible. So unless anyone has any questions or comments, that's my report, Mayor.
All right. We're all set. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Under pending business, we'll move to new business. A motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, March 19th, 2020, at 7:30 PM to hear comments regarding the 2020 community development funding requests and amendments to the five-year community development project plan. Moved. Megan? Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item B, motion to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with Anadaga County to community development for building improvement construction at the Canton Woods Senior Center.
Move.
Second. This is a previous community development grant that we're, we're just getting the contract. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item C, a motion to approve the Department of Public Works' request to withdraw $9,588 from the in lieu of Parks Reserve Fund for the purchase of dock floats to replace aging floats on our South Shore West Trail docking system. Move. Second. Whatever. Guys are eager beavers here tonight. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item D, motion to receive quotes for the replacement of carpet in the village hall clerk's office.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Gonna get a motion to award the quote for the replacement of the carpet in the village hall clerk's office to Spossato Floor Covering Companies in the amount of $6,895.
Move.
Was there a tabulation sheet of other quotes? That we were supposed to...
Usually, we, we see the quotes.
I don't have one. I just have the machine, just the contract with...
I mean, so long as we know...
Second with the motion for discussion.
Right. Sorry. So long as we weren't, they weren't the only better, is all my biggest concern would be.
She may not have done it because, because it was under $10,000. She really didn't even have to get quotes, right? Is that the procurement thing?
But she got three quotes, didn't she?
She did get three.
But she didn't get three.
She got three quotes. She had, I believe, four companies come through. One never answered.
Okay. All right.
I have a question, though. Just, I guess procedural more than anything. The, the funding for that line item isn't, isn't a budget, it's a, it's the bond, correct?
It's gonna be in the bond.
So shouldn't we put that below the approval or the award until we get the bond actually approved? Just move it down on the agenda?
Could do that. If you prefer.
Yeah, just saying.
Hold off that one, do item F first, and then...
Oh, whatever. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll hold on to that. Move to item F. Motion to authorize the village engineer to commence upgrades to the village hall, improvements at the DPW truckport, improvements in the village with respect to the Main Street grant, portions of which are the village's financial responsibility, at a cost of approximately $170,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Just for people's sake, we're talking about some safety upgrades where our clerks meet the public, you know, the windows and stuff. Insulation upgrades in this building and the police department, a carport, truckport type of facility at the DPW, so that our, our pickup trucks at night could be parked undercover, and I don't know, maybe other trucks too, but, so they're not sitting out in the snow and cold completely. Carpeting that was in item E. The Main Street items, our share of the grant that was announced last week, which would include part of the sidewalk that we're going to do from basically the four corners to the library, you know, where it needs to be done. And we are getting some partnership from the people who own that plaza, the Kenny's Plaza, the Washington Square Partners. But we'll also put in some benches, some, what do we call them, historic street lighting or type?
Decorative.
Decorative, like, like around River Street and in the River Street parking lot, just along the sidewalk on that side of the street. Would also include if we, any trees that we might put in. I know Steve is trying to see if it would be feasible, make sense to put some street trees along there. So our share of that will come out of this ban, and we, we resurface and stripe the parking lot and back of the village hall. It's crumbling as we speak. So that, that's all that would be under there. $170,000 is a little more than what these add up to be, because this is what the prices were. Maybe Steve got a price back in the fall for some of these things. It may change now. So we have to leave a little bit of allowance for increase in production, so... So we have, do we have a motion and a second on this one? Did we make that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we'll go back to item E, which we have a motion in a second already, on awarding the carpet to Spossato Floor Covering. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Before we pay bills, any questions, any more, any other conversation we need to have?
Yes, the financing is going to be acquired through a statutory installment bond, and the resolution is attached, and that needs to be approved by the board as well.
Right now?
Right now.
Okay.
Because there'll be a publication relative to this approval, and it's subject to any petitions or complaints within a certain period of time. So this starts it all running, so that we can go ahead and finish up with the details. So I would ask the board to adopt the resolution, which is attached to the...
Kind of explains how this is going to get paid back in three years.
Yeah.
Three years. It's not reading it. It's two and a half pages long. So can I get a motion to accept the statutory installment bond resolution as produced by Bob regarding the ban that we would be getting through Salve Bank?
Moved.
Second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Now, do we have anything that we need to discuss before we break?
Just a reminder to the public that the village elections are on May, March 18th, the day before our next board meeting.
Yes, March 18th, right here, from noon to 9:00 in this room. Four people running for three board spots. So we would advocate for people to get out and vote, so that the people that you think ought to be sitting up here will be sitting there, wherever that might be. All right.
I was going to make a suggestion, but I forgot about it, impending business. We used to have the employee handbook on there as a line item. I think that was circulated for comment. If we could, if anybody wants to make comments, I'd suggest you get them to Maureen. I've got, I made it about halfway through about three weeks ago, and I've got to get back to it and finish it, but we should get that done and then get it to Maureen and have her make the additions. We paid for, paid for that document, so we should get it produced.
Did you get that? All right.